Good evening all, I'd like to welcome you to the Village Council meeting on Monday, June 14, 2021.
Commissioner Roland Walter, present.
Commissioner Paul.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Paul Vlade.
Here, thank you. I'd like us all to stand up in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You grabbed your packets this evening, grabbed the minutes from our previous meeting on May 10th. Any questions, comments, or any information to approve at this time?
So moved.
Second.
Are you motion is second, will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Paul.
Yes.
Commissioner Roland Walter. Yes. Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Paul Vlade.
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Recognition, confirmation upon these presentations. I have proposed reappointment of Mary Lou Barreider and Kathy Feinman as trustees of the library board for a term expiring June 1st, 2025. Just a little background, Mary Lou became president of the board last year. It's an amazing job, Kathy's wonderful, Kathy's given the library board, Mary Lou and Kathy have a good understanding of her needs and looking into giving them relations in the library. The board of trustees, the people of the library board announced we have April meetings to recognize the appointment of the board members in the bank. Kathy is trustee of the board in terms of her expiration, June 1st, 2025. So I would entertain the motion for reappointment of Mary Lou Barreider and Kathy Feinman to see the Palos Park Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire June 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Are you motion is second, will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Paul.
Yes.
Commissioner Roland Walter. Yes. Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Paul Vlade.
Yes.
We are calling.
Yes, the motion carries. The second item is to proclaim the month of June National Safe Birthday Month, increase public participation in this healthy outdoor sport as emphasized the need for greater attention for courtesy, safety, and education to minimize incidents which lead to floating mishaps. And item C is to proclaim June 14, 2021, Monarch Pledge Day in the Village of Palos Park and encourage all residents to participate in community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation. In that vein, the Village of Palos Park has joined over 40 communities in a monarch pledge to inform our residents about the importance of protecting the monarch butterfly. This pledge is in support of the statewide initiative to conserve the breeding and feeding habitat of the monarch butterfly out of regional pollinators. This initiative will foster a culture of conservation which was flourishing pollinator habitat. The village has known the importance of butterfly and pollinator gardens for a while now. We already have a few natural pollinator gardens in the village. Currently, there is a garden at Pumped Station on Southwest Highway, Centennial Park, and outside the front doors here at the catcher center. Plans are underway to enhance our current gardens and also to add a few more that will contain milkweed and planting sick monarchs and pollinators we need to thrive. Signs like this one will be displayed. I think at that moment I was supposed to hold this up. Signs like this one will be displayed at some of the gardens around the village. Next, we have our updated disaster preparedness plan presentation. This will be presented by Palos Park Officer Frank Flores. Welcome back Frank, it's good to have you here.
It's nice to be back sir, thank you all for the invite. Yeah, it's hard to believe it's been 15 months, chief, it's, I don't know, feels longer, but the
For all of us.
You know, life goes on and I think we learned a lot over this last year and a little bit about emergency management, although it wasn't quite the disaster that everybody looks at it because you were still able to have running water, you had electricity, you were able to fill your gas tanks with fuel and a lot of the little things that had we not had, you know, the lockdown and everything else would have been 1,000 times worse than what we felt. So imagine, imagine that, what we went through and what we're still trying to come out of, right, being hit by something that would take years just to rebuild a town. So, we looked at the emergency operations plan as part of the Palos Park Emergency Preparedness Cycle. It never stops. You know, I may get up and do a presentation once a year and talk about something in emergency management, but it's something that we're always working on behind the scenes. And a lot of you got a lot of firsthand experience in dealing with the logistics aspects of it, the finance aspects of it, staffing and all these resource issues over this last year while we were battling this pandemic. But again, you know, there's a lot more threats to Palos Park than just pandemics. So, right now, we're talking about just a plan. We've updated our emergency operations plan. You've seen me here talking about our hazard mitigation plan in which we are one of 102 municipalities within Cook County that signed on, okay? And we have these threats, they can easily happen to us, how do we minimize the impact on the lives of the residents of Palos Park and the property of Palos Park? But we also organize, we train, we routinely train and, you know, we'll be looking at making sure that we continue incident command training and NIMs training, which this village has signed off on when it first came out, the National Incident Management System, which all of these little things put together are part of something much larger. Exercises, I believe before the pandemic, we had one out at Holy Family Villa on how to deal with active shooters. But it's not just active shooters, those are very cognitive in our minds because of what we see on television. But tornado season comes and goes, droughts come, fires come, all these different threats to us here in Palos Park. So the purpose of the plan is to give us a comprehensive plan that brings all of us together. It makes us look at things, it makes us look at the measures that are necessary to preserve life, to preserve property, so that we can minimize the damage and have a way to bring the town back up to 100% should we be hit by one of these disasters or emergencies, you know, because what's normal? Right? We learned that over the last year, what's normal? We have people on the phone now, Zoom meetings, all these different things, you know, we actually learned how to manage by not being in one location, although during this plan, I'll talk about having an emergency operations center, but we had pretty good, over a year-long exercise in managing by not being in the office. The plan talks about who does what, when, and how. It is not a document which micro-manages, it's a guideline. Because everyone here who the village has elected or has been brought in to serve in different capacities is a professional. You know how to run your departments, you know how to set policy, you know how to do these things. What this document that we put together, that we updated, is simply a guide to help prior to an emergency or incident. So we look at the responsibility for protecting the residents is ultimately this body. It does belong to the elected officials that were trusted by the people of this town, you know, to do the job. And those of you sitting in here, the different department directors, the village manager, and even, for example, those who aren't, like the fire chiefs that are in fire protection districts, the school district and all these others, we're all partners in getting this taken care of because we all have specific responsibilities. And it's coordination. It's not about control, it's about coordination. That is one of the things that's really been pushed in incident command, and that is having a multidisciplinary group of individuals who can set policy. You've let the professionals within buildings and police and fire and all, finance, all these folks do their thing, but setting policy becomes increasingly important during these emergencies. So it's part of the integrated system, and there's different phases. The one that I'm very familiar with, obviously being in law enforcement, is prevention. What do we do to not let things happen from the beginning? Right? Were we able to prevent that pandemic? Are we able to prevent, what just happened up north of Rockford today? What happened to that chemical plant? It blew up. It blew up, they had to evacuate over 1,000, it's not a big topic, they had to evacuate 1,000 residents, they had to activate a school as a shelter, all these things are part of our plan actually, should we happen to have something happen here in Palos Park. All right, but prevention, preparedness, what we're doing right now, even the residents who aren't sitting in here but are able to watch what we're talking about, are going to be a little more prepared. And before the pandemic hit, we were doing until help arrives programs, we were talking about SERF programs, because really, they're the foundation. Having a population that understands our abilities and our limitations makes our jobs a lot easier and makes them a lot safer. Response, again, fire, police, Public Works, buildings, all of these individuals, all these different entities and agencies within the village, even the ones I haven't mentioned, the library, recreation and parks, everybody plays a part in what's going on should we be hit by a disaster. Mitigation, I talked about it, we've got a plan that company requires us to update on an annual basis. This one, we don't have that requirement, but the mitigation plan, that goes through a review every year. We have to talk about what we've accomplished, what we no longer think we can, and the company helps review that. And then finally, recovery, if we are hit with a disaster, how do we get ourselves up and running again? How do we get the lights turned back in, the water running again, the gas running again, the businesses up and running? So all of this is part of emergency management, and every one of them is as important as the other. No one, you know, we have specialties, so some are near and dear to our hearts, but others are just as important in bringing all of these things together. So, the plan, and all of you have the document, and eventually, there'll be more copies around, but there's a basic plan, there's a summary of purpose that tells us, here's why we have this document, and then there's annexes. And the annexes are very specific to the things that we need to look at and accomplish. You won't necessarily use all of them, depending on what the disaster is, again, looking at, you know, our neighbors up in Rockford and what they are going through today, you know, they're not going to use every one of their annexes in their emergency operations plan, they're very specific to what's going on. So the basic plan gives us roles and responsibilities for key officials, everywhere from our chief elected official, all the way down to the different department heads, and there's even sections in there on how do we deal with volunteers who show up and want to help in town. And then the functional annexes, look at the specific functions which make our town run and what their different responsibilities will be should they be activated in an emergency or in a disaster. So we're looking at not just the government, because again, we're talking about a whole community concept, so you're talking about us and people, yes, they have a right to be reliant upon government to provide, but there's also private business. There are faith-based organizations in Palos Park, there are community groups in Palos Park, all of them can play a very important part in the prevention, preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation, should something happen in Palos Park. So we look at these different hazards, and it was a very comprehensive, when we first did our mitigation, there had been a hazard, a threat hazard analysis done years ago, but we updated it as part of the Cook County Plan in terms of what were the most likely things that could occur in Palos Park which would cause us the most damage and be the hardest to recover from? And then what capabilities do we have to respond to these things? Okay? Hazardous materials. Have you seen what drives up and down Route 83 to Route 45 on a regular day? And lately, they seem to like Route 72. You know, but all day long, we have these things, we don't have freight trains nearby, but think of how the crow flies, just because we don't have freight tracks going through Palos Park, think of the railroads which are in the vicinities around us. Right? And like I said, when I say as the crow flies, that means, yeah, your MapQuest may tell you it's a 15-mile drive here, straight plume could be one or two miles, should something toxic leak someplace else and depending on how the wind goes. So you've got these things, we have manufacturing, what's that plant in LeMans? Okay, all you need is a wind coming in this general direction, we're a nice residential community, but people around us, manufacturing and industry can have a significant impact on us. Transportation accidents, we do have Metro coming through. You know, I mean, obviously it slowed down a lot compared to what it used to, but things happen, whether intentional or accidental. I don't know if you can see it very well, but you know, on a good day, has anyone counted the number of Southwest Airlines flights flying over Palos Park? Yeah, planes don't fall out of the sky. You know, I mean, my job is to look at the whatevs and buts, and there's a lot of them, there's a lot of them. You know, and the hope is to be prepared for and hopefully never have that type of disaster happen. But planes fly over Palos Park on a regular basis, we have Midway Airport, and depending on which way the wind is blowing, you know, they like the west side of town, they like the west side of town. And then obviously we have trucks, 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 trucks. And they're all, you know, I read those placards and sometimes I just want to put the car in reverse and kind of go in the other direction, because I realize what they've got in there. We affectionately call them methyl, methyl death, it's a generic term for anything in those tankers that could really cause us a lot of grief. And for those of you that have been in town long enough, you know that we have fuel pipelines right underground, not too far from us. Because if you've been in town long enough, you remember the evening somebody near Edelweiss went, you know, and started smelling jet fuel. Right? We have natural gas lines underneath, all over the place. Any one of these can cause us a disaster or emergency, whether intentional or by accident. Tornadoes, floods, snowmageddon, you know, that's one of my favorite ones, Lake Shore Drive, please don't drive on Lake Shore Drive, yeah. But that's the way I go every day. You know, we need to help inform the public. Part of this, what we're doing, is giving that level of awareness, that when we give instructions, and you're not going to get everybody to understand, but it's our responsibility to get as many of them as possible to understand that when they're given instructions to shelter in place or to evacuate or to travel in a different direction, there's usually a pretty good reason. Major fires, I think Cook County does a pretty good job of trying to mitigate the impact from any fires in the Forest Reserve District around us. You've seen what California looks like. You know, and we have a lot of controlled burns, you know, in the area, we go through droughts, there's a lot of red flag days, you know, we're always on patrol asking people, please do not be, you know, burning branches or leaves or anything, you know, in a 20 mile an hour gust in the middle of a drought. All right? And then of course, civil disorder, I don't even want to talk about 2020. Okay? And believe it or not, there's still something called terrorism out there. And we do live in a nice hamlet, I don't think we're a major target, you know, among domestic or international groups, but the fact is, we are in a major metropolitan area. Okay? Where if somebody chose to do something, whether it's a mall like the one in Orland Park, okay, Oak Brook is not that far on a straight line, all of these different places are not that far from the quiet village of Palos Park. And it's our responsibility, and it's one of the things the plan talks about, is just looking at these things and being, you know, as prepared as we can be. And yeah, if you take a look at the map, again, going straight west, yeah, we've got a nice nuclear plant, I figured I'd throw that one in there. You know, for some reason, that one seems to catch everybody's attention. You know, I'm more worried about the trucks every day, but yeah, we do have a nuclear facility, you know, straight west. So, the general plan as far as operation is that every phase, we work with the fire protection districts in LeMans and here in Palos, because obviously, as law enforcement and fire, we're the first responders. I like to say, tell Public Works, although they always shake their heads and say, no, oh yeah, your first responders too. You know, Public Works is incredibly important, they were ignored for years, okay, by the badge wearers, but they are incredibly important to disaster response and being prepared and helping out when things go very bad. But we work with them on a regular basis. When we had our exercise at Holy Family Villa, we had the fire departments out there with us, so they would learn how we operate and we got a better picture of how they operate. So that if there is an emergency or disaster, there's no meeting and greeting, we already know each other and what has to be taken care of. The emergency operations center, you're sitting in. An EOC is where during a disaster, the policymakers and department heads would meet to go over what's going on, what's happening, and what's our plan of action? What's the incident commander doing on scene? What can we do to support them? And how long does this go? And if this facility wasn't located, the plan also calls for two alternates. So if we couldn't do it here in Village Hall, there's, as I said, there's a couple of other places. And these are consistent with the National Incident Management System. It's keeping the policymakers in one location, the incident responders who are dealing with it, you know, boots on the ground, so that coordination takes place from the policy level at the emergency operations center, and the resources are provided to the incident command for whatever it is that they need to, yeah. And one of the things that we've done, especially during the pandemic, is work with the Cook County Emergency Management and Regional Security. They've really stepped up their game from what it was years ago in terms of logistical support and assisting us in coordinating with other organizations. One of the things we use is Web EOC. When we had to order items for the pandemic, we were able to go online and it was a set logistical process that did a really nice job of tracking what we needed and when it was ready for us. And then IEMA, the State's Emergency Management, but the way things were set up, we would always go through the company first unless something happened and they were no longer there. Everything begins locally. You know, National Incident Management System, yeah, but all disasters start locally. Right? A tornado, a truck overturn, a civil unrest, train, it doesn't matter, it all starts locally, whether it's our town or another town. And I don't care if you bring in all the resources from the rest of the country, it is ours. It is our town, it is our responsibility, so it doesn't matter if the National Guard comes in, or the FBI, or FEMA, doesn't matter, it's our town. So the policies are set by our elected officials and put into action by our department heads. And I'm not the only one, this is a Palos Park thing, all jurisdictions that have emergency operation plans have the same concepts in them. Obviously, if the jurisdiction is overwhelmed, we don't have any more people, we don't have any more resources, then the mayor or his designate declares a state of emergency. We hear this at national level all the time, right, because it looks really cool on CNN and MSNBC and everything else, but our elected officials at this level, if it hit nowhere else but Palos Park, Palos Park has the authority to declare a state of emergency, which brings in special levels of assistance just for us. And obviously, it activates the plan that's been passed out and enhances our capabilities, because everybody starts getting those guidelines and is able to start bringing in the resources that they need. Most departments already know because you've handled what are some of the, I don't want to call it lower end because it seems to minimize it, the federal government calls them type five. Type five emergencies are the things we handle every day. A lot of times, you don't even hear about them. They're so common, you may see a little blurb in the paper, you know, there was an accident there, somebody got hurt over here, you know, someone fell into the Cal SAG, you know, you don't hear about them, but those are type fives, and we deal with those on a regular basis, and I like to think of them as mini disasters, because they're small versions of something much larger, but it gives us the ability to work together. Every department has its own SOPs. We have our own policies within the police department, I know, bless you, Public Works has things that they do specifically to their department, finance, the clerk's office, the library, everybody has their own SOPs that are very specific to their entity, but that, again, is just part of the larger picture. When you think about everybody we have who's part of this, you know, it becomes a little daunting, but everybody plays a role, from the mayor to the village manager, emergency management, the police chief, the fire chief, people coming in from social services such as the Red Cross or the Salvation Army to assist us, Cook County Sheriff's Office now handles our communications, Orland Park will handle communications for the fire service. All of these things, Public Works, Cook County Health, hopefully never, but the medical examiner's office. They have an amazing response team, I've seen them at different exercises, and I really hope that's the one you never want to see in action, but they are prepared, it's part of their policies on how they will respond to mass casualties. Transportation, we've got Metro, but we've also got the school districts who have buses, not that far. Finances become very important, it's interesting when I talk to responders, because that's the one thing nobody ever thinks about, how much everything costs. You know, and then, you know, let's just keep throwing resources into it and we'll leave the receipts for whoever's still standing at the end of this. No, times have changed, and we're responsible, and we understand there's an accountability, and we don't waste. That's part of this plan, it's part of exercising. Can we do it with this? Do I really need the helicopter? Or could I have done that with a rented truck? You know, both would have done the job, but how do you, you know, how do you get this done? And then obviously, if it is Palos Park, people in America have incredibly large hearts, but they also start to clean out their closets during disasters and start giving you everything that they've wanted to get rid of at the garage sale, that can become an incredible encumbrance on first responders because everybody wants to give, where does it all go? So yes, even places like Parks and Recreation where the library can help out, not on the front line, boots on the ground, but on the support capabilities because of all the other things that take place during these disasters. Continuity of government becomes important, lines of succession are talked about in this document, how do we preserve vital records? And if this building were no longer here, where does administration go? You know, and as I said, it's kind of interesting that last year, we learned we can run places on Zoom. We can run entire organizations just on the internet now if necessary. So you have these different annexes, and they're, again, they're broad, they're broad in tasks, they're not meant to, you know, they're not your stereo instructions, okay? They're not that specific, but they give broad guidance to department heads on what needs to be accomplished, and all of these are basically so that the primary audience is able to get the job done. There's 17 of them. All right? I won't read them to you, that way I can let the meeting go on, but every single one of these is part of what it takes, should there be a major emergency or disaster in Palos Park, to bring us back around, to help us with recovery and bring us back. Obviously, direction and control is very important, in fact, it's one of the largest annexes because it helps to clarify where does what come from. Again, you notice with the pandemic and with the civil unrest that occurred last year, you know, curfews, closing of stores, right? You saw on the East Coast, you know, you're talking about, you know, not having gasoline, right? Who gets that gasoline first? Well, the fire chief and the police chief will tell you, we do, but we don't have the authority to close down gas stations, it comes through policy, it comes from our elected officials. That's why direction and control becomes very important, because in our system of government, that's how it works. Elected officials look, sit down, look at policy and say, okay, here's what we need to get done. And one of the other ones that's very important is public information. And that's something that we need to get back to, obviously, is just teaching folks to understand the importance of there being self-reliant as much as possible, and one of the things the document also talks about is looking at our populations, which cannot be more self-reliant. And I think we do a pretty good job in this town also of knowing where they live, they're checked on regularly by cadets from the police department, so we have an understanding where they are, who needs help, who'd be able to lead on their own, so that every part of this town is taken care of and all of this part of this plan. So, you know, my favorite characters, you got Winston Churchill first, right? We take the constant worry, because really, my wife says, you realize your entire career has been waiting for the world to fall apart, I go, yeah, pretty cool, isn't it? Especially since it hasn't. Even with how bad the pandemic has been, again, you know, we weren't hit by Hurricane Sandy. Okay? We didn't get the, you know, the 8.0, you know, earthquake in California. But we learned from it, and that's the trick. And then Eisenhower, you know, years of planning for D-Day and how many people died anyway, and yet it was successful, and one of the things you mentioned, had nothing to do with all the plans. It's a good document, I think it's an excellent document, it's a living document that we should all be aware of and regularly, you know, look at input. It's a living document that we should all be aware of and regularly, you know, look at input and changing it. But if the balloon goes up, as they say, it's the fact that we sat down and did the planning which is going to help us deal with what went on, not because we have binders of pay. Any questions on the emergency operation plan? Just a quick overview. Obviously, it's, it's a document of about 80, 80 pages. You know, and again, it's a living document. So, so it's, it's there for review, it's there for implementation, it's there for suggestion. And I thank you for the opportunity. Yes, Chief?
Frank, one of the questions we were beginning to give is getting the SERC program back online. I know you've been looking into that, as to maybe the fall.
Yeah, either the fall or the spring, Chief, yeah. Yeah, all we have to do is look at that, I think the interest is definitely still there. I think we were really, we were at the starting date. And all of a sudden, the, the world's just kind of like, you know, you know, the air got let out. But I think if we start letting folks know again, and SERC teams, community emergency response teams, are again, us teaching our residents, right? Because think about that. For every SERC team member, every resident who sits in our training, even if they don't want to become team members, they just want to go through the training, which is free. They will have a better understanding of first aid, fire, basic firefighting. We don't want them climbing ladders and doing that kind of thing. They'll have a better understanding of structural issues. Time's up, right? That's a pretty good way of doing it, you know? I like that. See, the cool part is I got to the questions part before the 15 minutes. If I was only on slide three, I'd have been in trouble. But yeah, yes, that's definitely a, a good question. I know people have been asking while we're out on patrol. So I will work with the commissioner and with the chief on getting that, getting that rolling again. Because that is very important to, to getting everybody involved in this preparedness.
Do we have a tabletop plans?
That's coming. In fact, it's in the document, but when we do our tabletops now, one of the things, the chief sent me to the FEMA Basic Emergency Management Academy. And I had done this when I was with the state police. What we will be doing is Homeland Security Exercise and Evaluation Program compliant, HC. It's called HC. It gives us a set of guidelines on what we do, how we evaluate, what we want to evaluate, who should be part of that evaluation, so that we can sit down and test the policies that we're talking about. Test these documents with the individuals who would be at that ground level. And yeah, one of the things that we've also talked about is getting policymakers involved in these tabletops. What would you do as a policymaker, as an administrator, as a department head, should something like this happen? And it's, and it's, if you haven't participated in a tabletop before, it's very interesting to have everybody as a team come from their perspectives and put down that, that information because you learn something from, from everybody. And that's what it's about. But yeah, definitely. We'd like to actually put together a commissioner where it's a regular cycle, where we plan them. So then on an annual basis, we will know, for example, that if we did one this September, that we've got one next June, or that we have one. And eventually, you can start from tabletops and actually move up to more functionals where you're bringing in, you know, Payless Hospital, Cook County, Payless Heights, Orland, you know, village manager from another town also, you know, different people. Because the more that goes into it, as I said, the more people who are aware of what's, what's got to be done, should it ever go that way.
That was a terrific document. Thanks for your time and your effort.
My honor, sir.
Thank you.
Really? You cut this off too? Wow, they, they made sure I was, they made sure I was done right? I'll be a little fashion way. She's all yours. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Officer Flores. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be T or brought forward in connection with the Board of Commissioners and will be negotiated with a motion. If discussion is desired on that item, we will remove the consent agenda and consider it separately. A, to pass a resolution authorizing the those who are to make certain closed session minutes available for all of inspection, first reviewed in 2021. The resolution states the village has revealed closed session minutes and determine that a need for confidentiality still exists as the executive session with support. B, to approve the intergovernmental agreement at Payless Heights to pay for paving the Payless Park portion of 123rd Place East to the Capitol. I am C, to ratify approval for a proposal of engineering agreement from the handcount engineering to complete a drainage study of the Dell's area for a lump sum fee of $22,900. Item D, to ratify approval for a community association's studio Illinois Chapter Raffle License and Raffle Manager Von Weber request for a raffle hall on June 8, 2021 at Cock Hill Golf and Country Club. I am E, to ratify approval for Ronald McAllen House Charity Chicago Land Northwest Indiana Raffle License and Raffle Manager Von Weber request for a raffle hall on June 9, 2021 at Cock Hill Golf and Country Club. I am L, to approve the value fund foundation's raffle license and raffle manager Von Weber request for a raffle hall on June 24, 2021 at Cock Hill Golf and Country Club. I am G, to approve the liquor license application license for Tabernacle Garage and to approve ordinance 2020-20 in ordinance landing part eight, Title II, Chapter 808, Section 802, 230, Payless Park, Village Code in regard to Class A liquor license category. The ordinance states a decrease in the number of Class A liquor licenses by one due to a change in ownership of McDavid's Sports Bar and World and an increase in the number of Class A liquor licenses by one due to the issuance of a new liquor license to Tabernacle Garage located at 12900 South Frank Road, Payless Park, Ohio. Item H, to ratify payment invoices on a warrant list dated May 24, 2021 in the amount of $99,559.22. Item I, to approve payment of invoices on a warrant list dated June 14, 2021 in the amount of $178,574.22. Item J, to approve the supplemental warrant list dated June 14, 2021 for the annual checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers in the amount of $397,406.54. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sir Luke?
Bring a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilmer Rich Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Reed?
Yes, the county department manager is, yes, I'm going to read the whole stuff.
Thank you. Commissioner Pavlantis?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. The items of old business be brought before the council at this time. For commission committee recommendations, this is just an announcement. The Western Growth Area Development and Design Guidelines in the Western Growth Area Plan Unit Development Ordinances, as recommended by the Village Plan Commission following its hearing on May 20, 2021, will be considered by the village at its meeting of June 28, 2021, which is two weeks from today. Information updates, Public Works and Streets Recreation Board, Commissioner Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have one item on the agenda regarding some patching on 100th Avenue. 100th Avenue will not be included in this year's paving project. However, there is a section of the street from 12550 to 12555 that is crumbling and needs to be repaired. Public Works has received three proposals to complete the repair. The repair will be the full width, which is approximately 280 linear feet, equaling 5,265 square feet. We received a proposal from Shamrock for $10,360, C and C asphalt paving for $19,400, and Irish Castle for $9,900. So we would like to award the job to Irish Castle. Does anybody have any question? I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Irish Castle Paving in the amount of $9,900 to repair 5,265 square feet of 100th Avenue.
Second?
Bring a motion in a second. Any questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wilmer Rich Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlantis?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
Then I just have a couple of announcements. Chipper service starting on June 21st. Please do not place your branches at the street until the weekend before June 21st. The branch chipping service will begin on the west side of the village on Monday, June 21st. Branches should be placed out by 7:00 a.m. on June 21st. Thing I'm saying is, it's a little time so everyone knows which week and which day this is starting. Once the chipper has passed your street, it will not return until the next chipping day. Please see complete list of dates and the regulations on the village website under the Department of Public Works, Tree Branch Pickup. Please put the cut end out facing the street so the guys can easily grab it and throw it into the chipper. Want to thank everyone that attended the Memorial Day event. We had a really beautiful turnout, it was a great day. And it was a very nice event. The Boy Scout, Global Boy Scout Troop presented the colors. Pastor Cheryl was there and lots of veterans and other church responders and stuff. So it was a great time. So thank you, everyone who came. And then my last announcement is, very exciting, this Thursday, June 17th, Concert in the Park. Getting back to some of our events, starting with our Concert in the Park. The weather's looking good, fingers crossed, don't want to jinx us. Our band is Brass from the Past. They are a cover band that features hits from 60s, 70s, and 80s. Their specialties are Motown, R&B, funk and soul, and rock and roll. The grounds open at 6:00 p.m. and the band starts at 7:00 and plays until 9:00 p.m. This is one of those BYOF, bring your own food, bring your own beverages, bring your own blankets and chairs. We aren't going to pull up picnic tables this time around. So just bring everything you need to chill out, relax, and have a really nice time this Friday. Again, the ground, I mean, this Thursday, Thursday, this Thursday. Again, the grounds open at 6:00, the band starts at 7:00 and will be playing until 9:00. And we hope to see you there in that complete tranquil.
Awesome, should be a great event. Commissioner Lee, the Building and Public Property Report.
Thank you very much. The Building Department has been working hard, like, to make sure that laws are being credit maintained. Please keep your laws maintained. Chapter 692, that 02 of Village Code requires property owners to cut high grass and weeds on their property. Grass and weeds can not exceed eight inches in height. If you are aware of a property that has become overgrown, please call 671-3732. The Building Department processed 75 permits from May 1st through June 8th, resulting in $115,034.50. Twenty-two inspections were conducted during the four months in time period. Last fiscal year ended with $216,064.87 in current fees. I have one other matter for your consideration this evening. There are others to ordinance approving a six-month extension of the time limit for the validity of a front yard setback variation in 12100 South Engleth Avenue. On June 22nd of 2020, the council approved an ordinance granting a front yard variance of 13.395 feet from the required 76.395 foot setback for the construction of a new single family home. Texting code 64, that's even out of the code, requires construction improvement subject to a variance to begin with a manual for approval. Although, for golden permit approval, the project has been subject to the lens in continuing design. Additionally, with the recent spike in building material cost, the aperture would like to delay construction to allow stabilization through pricing. You have the documents before you put them to the stand. Before making a motion, I would ask if anyone has any questions or comments. Hearing that, I move to approve the ordinance, open December 2021-9, approving the six-month extension of the time limit for the validity of a rear yard setback variation for the property located in 12100 South Engleth Avenue, at 162.
Second?
Bring a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilmer Rich Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlantis?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes. And motion carries.
That concludes our report, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Polk, Public Health and Safety Report.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. So the activity report extends from the 10th of May through the 14th of June. We had 5,046 calls for service, that's about 1,000 a week, that's about where we've been. Wore 110 adjudication tickets and additional 15 traffic tickets. Provided 33 written and 41 verbal warnings, 63 case reports, arrested four adults. Fortunately, no juveniles, impounded two vehicles, 36 senior checks, and an additional 68 citizen assists. So that's what the Village of Payless Park has been up to for the last month or so in terms of the police department. I have one quick announcement. We're implementing another new program, looking at providing free medical identification bracelets to members of your household, should you so desire them. Basically, the way that the bracelet works is that it provides a link to information that you have populated in terms of your medical issues, either patient information, medical history, medications, allergies, any particular special circumstances, identifying pictures, any other contact information. And that information is then recorded on a bracelet. The bracelet has several ways of being able to have a first responder or an appropriate individual gain access to it. There are, there's phone numbers, there's a way to do it over the internet. There's also a QR code that can be accessed. So these identification bracelets are free. They are voluntary, so there's no requirement that you provide any information other. I mean, otherwise, you wouldn't need the bracelet, right? But you could just put some contact information if that's all you wanted to. The way one obtains more information, or one obtains a bracelet, is by contacting the Payless Park Police Department directly at 708-671-3770. We have two officers who are helping us coordinate this program. You can also send them emails. Sergeant Hughes, at C as in Charlie Hughes, H U G A G S, at paylesspark.org, all lowercase, no spaces. And Officer Scacchia, their email is D as in dog, scacchia, S C A C C I A, at paylesspark.org. But again, if you just call 671-3770, we'll be happy to provide you with any of the information that you need. And again, it's a free program. Chief Miller?
Nothing, Commissioner.
For a whole month? I'm joking.
No mention about Coffee with the Cop, restarted it?
The fact that you were the guest speaker?
I didn't speak, I just listened.
So we had our first Coffee with the Cop last Wednesday, so that program's back up and running. Thank you, Mayor Mahoney, for your participation. We had, you know, six, eight individuals or so that were there. A couple of the officers were there, wide-ranging group of topics. But again, it's a chance to share your concerns, questions, issues. There also is, I believe, a Coffee with the Chief, or whatever we're calling that these days.
That's the last Friday of the month, here at 7:00 p.m.
Exactly. So if you can't make it during the day for Coffee with the Cop, you can have whatever beverage you'd like with the chief on the last Friday. beverage you'd like with the chief on the last Friday of the month at seven p.m. here at the police department at the Capter Center. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Officer Flores, for a really thoughtful disaster plan. I'll be needing an ice cream cone tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Council's plan answers. Commissioner Pavlatis?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have no official report, and I have no announcements to see.
Thank you kindly. I have no report this evening. Eric O'Leary?
I have no report this evening.
Excellent. Manager Bam, you have a few items.
Well, I have one for the consideration of the council, and that's a AT&amp;T cellular site retention offer for the communication facility located ninety-five forty West one-hundred-and-twenty-third Street, which is our water tower site. This is the second time in the last three years that the Village of Payless Park has received an offer from AT&amp;T through its agent M-D-seven for a cellular site retention slash rate rent guarantee period. These offers extend the lease period and reduce the monthly rent for the tower lease. On June eleventh of twenty eighteen, the village council voted to reject an offer from M-D-seven, which was dated May second of twenty eighteen. That offer proposed a reduction in rent, a decrease in the escalator, and also extended the lease, offered to extend the lease from twenty forty-five to twenty fifty. The new proposal to the village was received from M-D-seven on May twenty-fourth. The letter was dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. The village of Payless Park water tower lease site is, according to M-D-seven, up for consideration to eliminate its use. The offer they made is to reduce the rent from its current roughly twenty-one thousand, two eighty a year to fifteen-six-sixty a year commencing on January first of twenty twenty-two. Also to reduce the escalator to seven point five percent for every five years. That escalator is currently at twelve percent every five years. And also to extend the lease from twenty forty-five to twenty fifty-five. They would also guarantee rental income of seventy-nine thousand, four seventy-four-fifty-six for that, in that time period. The alternative, AT&amp;T is offering a one-time lump sum payment of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, seven fifty-five for a ninety-nine-year lease. The offer in twenty eighteen was for a fifty-year lease. It also, on the alternative, offered a two-hundred-and-fifty-five-nine-twenty-two and five equal installments of fifty-one-one-eighty-four-four. This, this matter is really a policy question for the village council, whether to accept or reject the proposed proposal, recognizing the rejection may mean that AT&amp;T would end its lease in twenty twenty-five. That's the, we're in the current term, five-year term of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. If the council chooses to accept the terms of the new amendment, we will need to prepare documents for final action. So I've got two motions listed there. One would be to accept the criteria, and one would be to reject the criteria. And I open to any questions you may have.
So this is kind of a legal question for attorney bear, perhaps. So what happens if the M-D-seven wants to terminate the lease in two thousand twenty-five? What's required of them?
They would have to remove their equipment from the water tower, and then that would terminate the lease. But there are requirements within the lease agreement that obligate them to remove all of their equipment at their cost from the water tower.
Is there any payment of money due in that?
No. The contract is set up with five-year increments where they have an initial, an initial term of, I believe, ten years, and then they had so many five-year options, they've exercised the option for two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-five, so they're obligated to pay for that time period. But they have not exercised an option beyond that. The current agreement goes through with options through potentially two thousand forty-five. Each time is a five-year option that they would take.
Okay. Do we have an expert's sense of how likely it is that they would terminate that lease at the end of two thousand twenty-five? Or, or do the numbers they are offering us tell that story? The reason I ask that is they're offering us two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars for a ninety-nine-year lease, which tells me that they're not likely to terminate it in two thousand twenty-five. I mean, is that a first statement?
I, I would certainly say so. They, each site is unique to itself. Our water tower, in my opinion, is probably one of the highest spaces around, surrounded with a lot of forest reserves. I don't know that they'd find a better location. I'm certain that the, there is some consideration by AT&amp;T to reduce the number of towers nationwide. Is this particular one a threat, or is this a way for a consultant to renegotiate and perhaps make a bonus or something for, commission for, for his company? My sense would be is that.
You can always ask, right?
Absolutely. It's not likely we're going to approach them and say, hey, why don't you pay less? You got another three or four years to go, but you know, we're feeling particularly generous. So my opinion is that we vote to reject it, but that's my opinion. That's the motion I would be willing to make.
Does anyone have a contra-ressence?
I do not. The only thing that, I'm just curious, because I am not aware of like these numbers, but like how close towers need to be so that their system is effectively working? And where's the next closest tower? Because I agree, it's probably the highest site, so it's got the best like shot to get to the next tower so things connect. And that's the only thing I don't know, and I don't expect you to know the answer to it. I just didn't know anybody was like, you know, up on that kind of stuff.
Well, just refreshing my recollection, would you not, do not permit private persons to erect cell towers?
Correct.
And so that cell tower location is really the only site other than on either Public Works or at the Capter Center?
Or, I will throw it just north of McCarthy, there's another tower site. Correct. AT&amp;T is not on these other sites.
The only one they're on is the water tower.
Correct.
I move my formal statement.
If we all said anything, I'll, I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
I have a question. What does the staff recommend?
This is a policy question, Commissioner, but I would recommend to reject. I think there is a risk that they may actually carry through at some point in removing their equipment off the tower. But I think it's early in this term, and if they're, they're serious about, I, I just don't get the sense that they want to do anything except reduce our, the rent paid to the village.
If I can just make a comment, I cannot vote on this matter, but the questions that you are asking, I can answer, but because of who it is, I can't do that publicly.
Thanks, Darrell.
So if this is a matter that has to be, I'm going to have to refine, or say anyway, fellows, but obviously with that.
So I'm going to withdraw my request to deny and ask this be tabled until the next meeting of the council.
Continue to.
Continue, whatever.
And is there any urgency before the next meeting?
I, I don't believe so. Just tell, tell the consultant or the, the council that it's continued the matter.
Sounds good to me then.
So I have a motion to continue.
So I'll make a motion to continue the consideration of the AT&amp;T cellular site retention offer for the communication facility located at ninety-five forty West one-hundred-and-twenty-third Street until, do I have to specify a date time?
I would suggest you do.
Until the next scheduled council.
Which would be June twenty-eighth.
Which would be June twenty-fifth, God, twenty-fourth, God willing, and we'll all be twenty-eighth.
All right.
And we're all here.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolford? Yes. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlatis?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
Let's all hear it.
All right, announcements. I realize that I forgot to read after the pledge of allegiance, the information about Flag Day. Amid a revolution, someone read it now, all right? Amid a revolution, blessing here to claim our independence, the Congress consecrated what will become an enduring and long American unity by adopting a national flag on June fourteenth, seventeen seventy-seven. In the two-hundred-and-forty-four years since, our flag has sailed around the globe, journeyed to the moon, and now to Mars, has flown on fields of battle and marks resting places of those who have given them, President Lincoln called the last measure of devotion to our country. Its prominence at civil landmarks and seats of public authority communicates the promise of democracy. As we continue the sacred work of building more broken union, let our flag serve as a reminder to us and to the world that America stands for and strives for the ideal of being the promise of freedom, liberty, and justice for all. Meeting updates. The Historic Preservation Committee will not meet on June fifteenth. There are no agenda items. The Library Board will meet on Wednesday, June sixteenth. That's this Wednesday at five p.m. virtually. Members who are public may attend the meeting by phone. Dial three-one-two-six-two-six-six-seven-nine-nine, or there's a Zoom call, it looks like, maybe not. Eight, and the meeting ID is eight-nine-five-two-four-five-seven-two-seven-three-four, and the pass code is one-oh-seven-six-three-four. Public comments can be submitted in writing two hours before the meeting. Email comments to info@paylesparklibrary.org. In case you missed this, I'm assuming this information is also available on the library's website. The Plan Commission meeting for June seventeenth is canceled as our agenda items. The Payless Fine Arts will not be on Thursday, June seventeenth. They will be at Concert in the Park. The next scheduled meeting is July fifteenth. Mayor's Village Hampkins announcements. The Payless Park Women's Club, PPWC, the Payless Park Women's Club was founded in nineteen oh-two. This club, the current eighty-two members, promote cultural, educational, wellness, and civic interests as a charitable organization. Recently, the Payless Park Women's Club received the Honors from Illinois Chapter, the General Federation of Women's Club. Two thousand twenty, Award Excellence for Leadership, two thousand twenty, Award of Excellence in Junior Special Program Advocates for Children, top ten Award for Health and Wellness, top ten Award for Membership, top ten Award for Junior Special Program Advocates for Children, top ten Award for Leadership, Most Creative Award in Leadership. Congratulations for all the accomplishments of the Payless Park Women's Club. The center, make plans to enjoy the children's farm at the center, where you can visit firemen, also walk the trails, and enjoy hay rack rides, weather permitting. Open to visitors on Saturday and Sunday for ten a.m. to four p.m. during the months of June, July, and August. Visits are seven dollars per person, age two and under are free. And that announcement about the center did remind me that on Saturday morning, I attended a celebration of life for Dorothy Blount, who passed away in late March at the eight, the wonderful age of one hundred and three. It was a very nice remembrance. Her son, Doug Blount, gave a beautiful kind of background of her life, including interesting facts like Dorothy Blount was a cousin of Red Grange. I found that to be a very interesting fact. She grew up in Wheat. But we will always remember Dorothy. She was a wonderful and kind woman, and it sure was a delight to have her be from Payless Park. And that concludes my announcements. Citizens and visitors count period, does anyone from the audience want to address the council?
I actually haven't come, I'm pretending in the audience, if that's okay.
You can always make a count.
Thank you. I did forget to mention, just recently, the Cook County Circuit Court, the Chief Judge, Timothy Evans, has declared a new court holiday, Juneteenth. We'll be honoring it this Friday with all the courts being closed, and I just thought I'd bring it to everybody's attention, because, you know, it's good to know that we are paying attention and recognizing important things, like when the last slaves found out that they were actually free, so.
Taxes and.
Yes.
And that day, eighteen sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay, yeah. I try to remember exactly, but so I just wanted to share that, so don't go to the courthouse on Friday.
All right. With that, thank you, Commissioner. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Wolford?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlatis?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you all, good evening.